Know that that corner in Logan County is under development. I think there's a restaurant, maybe a car wash.
It's directly across the street. And so just for the folks, I guess, that are here, I'm sure you guys are aware. I mean, Oklahoma County, we have a planning commission. We have zoning and subdivision regulations that we go through to where Logan County, they have nothing. To where essentially you can go out there tomorrow and build whatever you want out there. So it's a different process. Another question that's come up frequently in regards to the protest is the traffic out there, which is a valid point. I mean, that particular location in regards to the county's jurisdiction is probably traffic count wise is the highest traffic counts that we have in the neighborhood of ten to twelve thousand a day. Part of the issue in this particular case is Oklahoma County only owns, I don't want to say own, but we can only maintain the south half of Waterloo Road. Logan County maintains the north half, and then the interchange itself there at I thirty-five is maintained by ODOT. So you have three different jurisdictions that have various processes to maintain all these facilities. ODOT has indicated in the past, they've had on their eight-year work plan for quite some time to where they want to improve the interchange of I thirty-five. That was something that was supposed to start, you know, actually a few years ago, and the most recent plan that they have out actually pushes construction possibly till twenty twenty-five. Based on their calculations, you're looking at an interchange that would cost in the neighborhood of thirty-six million dollars. So it's definitely, definitely a high-priced project. And that's most of the issue with these type of projects is getting enough funding to move forward. My understanding from people that are out there, property owners now, ODOT is starting to appraise properties. So maybe they're looking to start buying right away now, possibly. That's just kind of speculation on my part, but that's what I get when we have multiple phone calls. So that's just a little bit more backstory of why you have what you have out there today.
Stacy, while he's passing these out, have you taken a chance to look at this? And do you have any initial thoughts or?
No, I have, I have not.
So the area that backs up to the east of this lot, what is that zone currently?
So everything along Boucher Drive is either commercial CG, which is our most intensive commercial, which is commercial general. There are some lots along there that are CO, which is limited commercial. And then the majority of lots as you go south, if you go back one slide, as you come south along Boucher, after you go past those first three lots there, everything south beyond that point is industrial. So you have various activities out there. We have a storage facility. We have some tractor stores that sell tractors, that sort of thing. One of the things that was approved by the planning commission recently that's out there is someone wanted to do consignment as far as RVs. So that's out there as well now. So it's kind of a conglomeration of heavy activities, if you will.
Is there any, is ten acres a big enough footprint to put a truck stop?
Well, I mean, it just depends on how much traffic you want to serve. Sure, you can do a smaller type of facility. I don't, I don't think that's uncommon, but it just depends on how, how many people you want to serve out of the truck stop. You know, as an example, you can't see it on this particular map. Maybe if you go back to the other map, you can't really see it. But on the east side, on the, on the north side of Waterloo there, there's an ONQ. And that site I know is not ten acres. So, and they just serve vehicles, common vehicles, so they don't serve trucks by no means. But really just depends on how much, how much traffic they want to serve in that particular facility.
Any other questions for Eric?
Right. And I think they wanted to probably, and I'll let them speak to that, but I would assume it would be a combination of regular cars. But I think their main focus is probably on trucks, semis.
So Eric, there's sewer and water available?
So as far as water, there is water there. It would be through Logan County Rural Water District. So they would have to get, you know, work with them. And from my understanding, they've already had discussions with Logan County to secure water there. As far as sewer, there's no sewer there in that area at all. So I know there were some discussions and I'll let them speak to that and some possible solutions, but there's no city sewer that people are common.
All this other commercial stuff in that area, it's all on private, private septic or sewer or aerobic or something?
Right, aerobic septic type of systems.
Any other questions for Eric? Hearing none. Is there anyone here who would like to talk in favor of this project? If you could state your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. Pervy Patel with Wallace Design Collective. We are the applicant. Address is four-ten North Walnut Road, Walnut Avenue, Oklahoma City. So we are the applicant, and there's just a couple of things that I'd like to clarify. We had used the word truck stop just because that's the way it's defined in county code, county planning code. This would be more of a travel destination, a travel stop. So we would service RVs, passenger vehicles, semi trucks as well. But it would include a convenience store with food stop, food court opportunities, as well as a drive-through. So it's more of a destination versus just truly a truck stop. We will have areas for RVs to pull into, park, a little dog park if they are traveling with some animals, or relief area and so forth. As Eric mentioned, this is off of I thirty-five and Waterloo. And the reason for us requesting the commercial highway use was in discussion with staff. They felt it would be better coming in with a CH use versus a CG use, which is what the adjoining parcels are zoned. The uses allowed within the CH district are more limited than they are in a CG district. The use that we're requesting is permitted in both commercial, general commercial as well as highway commercial. And as Eric mentioned, ODOT does have plans to improve the interchange. The plans we've seen so far, the improvements would go up to our frontage as well. So there would be some expansion of roads in front of this site. And if the zoning is approved, it would meet all of the code requirements, county codes, as well as ODQ requirements. Eric did forward us some of the protest letters we got. We have had a conversation on this. And we are amendable to doing up to a fifty-foot landscape buffer on the south side of the development. I believe city code requires a ten-foot buffer if you butt up to R one or R zero. The property to the south is R two, but we are willing to go up to a fifty-foot buffer, as well as putting up an eight-foot tall fence to mitigate some of that sound effects they have. Our client also does include no idling signs throughout their lot to ensure that trucks or RVs that are parked would not be idling overnight. And they try to enforce that as best as they possibly can. I am here for any additional questions you may have.
As far as like lighting goes, I'm sure that that'd be a concern of neighbors around that area. So what would be the, what would be thought about your lighting of the parking lot and stuff?
We would have to provide enough lighting for safety concerns, but we would, we could include some shields to ensure that the lighting is just coming downwards. It doesn't shine outwards towards adjoining properties the way we install the lighting.
And your anticipated hours of operation?
Um, I don't want to speak, but twenty-four hours? Yep, it would be a twenty-four hour.
And when you say services, gas?
Gas, food, coffee, drive-through, convenience store.
No repairs, no?
That is not anticipated at this time, no sir.
And you're saying you're going to have a sign that says no idling?
Yes, we will have signs that say no idling in the parking.
And you think that's going to work?
That's why I did say that we would try to enforce it as best as we could.
What are the plans for septic?
Um, we would be providing a private septic system. We haven't done the design of it yet. We're waiting to get through the zoning process before we start full engineering. I'll let our engineer answer that question.
Hold on. Are there any other questions for this lady?
So which property does the applicant own that borders on Boucher Road? Would you just point it out? I mean, is it the one to the north, one in the middle, or the one to the south?
It's the middle one, I believe. That one right there, the one that Eric is pointing to.
What's to the north? What's, what's on that property to the north? Do you know what it is, Eric?
I think there's a golf cart shop there. There's a couple of other shops. It's just kind of strips and they have multiple uses.
Any other questions for this lady? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Eric, if you could state your name and address?
Yes. Alec Bass, Wallace Design Collective, four-ten North Walnut Avenue, Oklahoma City. Also here representing the applicant is the engineer. To address your question on sanitary sewer, we have reached out to the subdivision across the street from us. They are in the process of building a treatment facility for their development. At this time, there was no guarantee that they were going to have capacity for us. This site does drain northward, so we do not want to open lagoon system in front of our store any more than you do. So we would be looking at some sort of underground aerobic system. That would be onsite treatment and then spray, uses irrigation water.
And DEQ will go for that?
We have, they've done it on other sites, the system. It's a, it's an underground treatment system, so it's not just your standard residential. So it actually has activated sludge in it, so the water that is coming out of the spray heads has been treated.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
I guess I do have a question. So where is this property that, that they're proposing to do this underground septic system? Could you, could you, you know, point it out on, on the map, but don't, don't touch the map, just sort of point to it?
So we have not gotten to that phase of design in the project to figure out where we would put it onsite?
You had mentioned that you might partner with another person.
Who would be the partner? Like where would be your? Oh, in Logan County.
And use those spray heads so we wouldn't just be leaching water straight into the ground?
Stacy, this is going to be a question for you.
And that would be approved by ODQ.
Yeah, if they were to, yeah, if they were going to partner with a group to the north, they would board under.
Right, but that's a private development. It's a private entity. They are under no obligation to allow us to participate.
So the use of that ten acres is not all for parking asphalt building. You're going to have some green area in the back or sides or?
We would have the fifty-foot landscape buffers that we talked about. We would have the landscape islands to help direct and control traffic. There's going to be a dog park element to this. So people traveling with pets or small animals have a place for them to stretch their legs. And then we would figure out a little bit of the frontage, how to just beautify that for our own benefit.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else here to talk in favor of this project? Okay, hearing none. Before we get started, for those of you who would like to talk against, a couple of things. Try not to repeat yourself if you hear everybody else. And second of all, address us. Do not address them. You're talking to us. So with that said, is there anybody here who'd like to talk against this project? If you come up one at a time? And state your name and address, please?
My name is Michael Davis. I'm at sixty-seven thirteen North Sooner Road. And yeah, I'm definitely against this rezoning request at this time. First and foremost, and as has been sort of mentioned, Waterloo Road, under its present state, cannot handle this project. I mean, you know, what we're basically talking about is semis coming off of I thirty-five, traveling west, and then needing to make a left turn into this fueling stop on the only lane that currently exists as a westbound Waterloo Road surface. There's, there's no room for traffic to go around. And as was mentioned, we're talking about ten to twelve thousand cars a day. And then you add a semi, and then another semi, and another semi that has to stop westbound and obstruct everything behind all the way to the interstate in order to eventually make it through traffic and get into the truck stop. The, putting it on the south side of Waterloo, the south, southwest sort of corner of Waterloo and I thirty-five is quite possibly the worst place you could put a truck stop at, on those four corners. You know, there's mention about plans for DOT expanding Waterloo. But we've also heard that those cans have been kicked down the road over and over and over. And, you know, the, the, the rolling eight-year plan that keeps sort of renewing over and over and over for another eight years down the road. The only thing worse than imagining how bad Waterloo Road is going to get when they eventually do try to upgrade it is if Waterloo Road is trying to accommodate a truck stop while it's being upgraded. I mean, that, that would be an even worse scenario. I, I just don't think that this has been very well thought through for the impact of those thousands of people that use Waterloo Road as a commuting source every single day. You know, just now as we're sitting here talking about how they would possibly manage the septic issues, maybe we do an aerobic system that has spray heads. But as, as y'all mentioned, spray heads require some sort of green area to spray. And a ten, ten-acre spot to house a convenience store and fast food and RV parking and semi parking and diesel pumps and commercial, you know, regular car gasoline pumps. You know, we're starting to run out of square footage to put enough green space to handle a set of bathrooms that are going to be used twenty-four seven. So I don't see that this has been sufficiently thought out, and I don't think that Waterloo Road can handle it right now.
I've got a question. Can you point out where your property is located on the map there?
Don't touch the map.
So does your property adjoin the ten acres? Does it touch, does it touch the ten acres?
It does not, it does not touch the ten acres, but, and you know, the, the two-dimensional thing here doesn't really give you the idea. You know, Waterloo Road climbs to Sooner. I'm on Sooner at the, more or less the corner of Waterloo and Sooner. And so from my house, I can see the ground of that spot.
What is to the, it's zone commercial, correct? I guess to the west of this ten acres, but to the east of you is zone commercial right there?
Uh, yes. It's currently, currently used as residential. It currently has houses that are occupied as residences right now.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Again, if you could state your name and address, please?
Nathan Bryant, and I live at ninety-eight twelfth Hillcrest, but I'm representing Waterloo Road Church of Christ, which is directly to the west of the property. We are affected by it. I've, I've done civil engineering for twenty-two years. I work for a place in Edmond. So I'm appointed to know a little bit about what's going on. What has been addressed has been great. I'm, I'm glad that they're trying to address light pollution, air pollution, sound pollution. That's already been addressed of some of the things that they're doing. But we look at the crime rate, things that have happened. We've had situations where we have homeless people. They, I believe they live directly diagonal from, from where we live, and they, they cross our building. They, they constantly cut through. We have situations where, being, being a church, you have a lot of, of visitors, people that request assistance. And knowing what takes place at truck stops, there's a little bit of a concern for the kind of element that is there. You look at, you know, child abductions. You look at prostitution. You look at alcohol and drugs. We've had people show up on our doorstep that did not know they were there. If you have an element that allows, there's a lot of begging, a lot of, of assistance that is requested. And so some of our concern is just wanting to, I, I don't think it's, it's an appropriate. venue to have when you have churches, you have schools, you have neighborhoods, you have a situation that we've already addressed the traffic. You have the on cue that is on the east side of I thirty five, but then you have a small little gas station that's probably three quarters of a mile or a half a mile, um, um, at I thirty, Waterloo Road and Sooner Road. So there's another gas station right there. And not to mention the parking and the, the expanded, the ODOT plans on taking seventy-two feet of our ride away, and they're cutting through our septic system as it is. So they're going to realign our drive and everything like that. So I know it's coming through, but that's going to be quite a mess. If you have the development across the street, when you have a proposed truck stop coming in and you have everything else that's going on, and so how it's going to affect the lives of the neighbors, the church building, the school that's going to be there, Epic Charter School, I believe. And you, and. And so there's, there's a lot going on right there. And like I said, being in the, the first thing I learned doing civil engineering is if you like the view, buy it. And I understand that, but I think being a good neighbor is, is important to what's going on. If you want to put something in there, be cognizant of who you're building around.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And anybody else? Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Michael Couch. My address is six four zero zero North Sooner Road in Edmund. And my wife has made a little diagram for you all to look at. You can't see it, so I, I would like.
Point to your house first real quick, show us which one it is.
Sure, can you zoom in a little bit?
No.
Oh, you can't?
Okay, thank you. Real quick, do we need to make a motion to us?
Okay. Keep going, sir.
The first thing I would like to do is address the, the use, or the rezoning to commercial highway. If I could indulge you and just read the definition of commercial highway. It says to provide commercial facilities for the traveling public along freeways in those areas where surrounding urban development does not exist. And normal urban services are not available. Commercial uses permitted or limited to those types which directly serve automobile and trucks needs, provide basic convenient goods for and for cross-country travelers. Because these areas will be located in low-density agricultural areas, their location should be limited to freeway or highway intersections. They should be relatively small in size, and care should be taken in the location and development of structures to minimize their impact on surrounding, surrounding land uses. So by that definition, already we see that the property in question is not located on a freeway intersection. The immediate intersection from I thirty five is the frontage road, which has its own set of businesses on it. There's a tractor, there's two tractors, there's public storage, and there is a charter school. The next intersection is Bouchure Drive, which we have talked about is commercial property. However, that is a low-traffic commercial property. You don't see very much traffic at all going up and down Bouchure. Now, they've extended that to cross into Logan County. So then we have the property in question. So that's two intersections off of the freeway. It is not located on a freeway intersection. The next thing that we need to talk about is the low, the, the low population. As you can see, there is a huge development going in north. There's already a Taco Bell, a Wendy's, and a Car Wash. There's going to be apartment buildings, there's going to be single home family units put in there, there's going to be businesses. That is going to be a very, very busy location, a lot, and I don't know if you all have been following the population boom out here, but that area right there along Waterloo and Sooner and I thirty five is just massively expanding. The population is not low-density. So it, it does not fit the definition of being turned over to commercial freeway use. The other thing that my concern is, since I border the property, and they have said that the property south of them is zoned as residential, that it is not. It is zoned agricultural. I have horses, I have chickens, I have an organic farm, I'm getting ready to put in a beef farm. We do a lot of our own farming out there to be self-sufficient. So if you put a truck stop in where you're going to have traffic all the time, the possibility of idling vehicles, and if you have RVs, they're going to need septic also. I don't think that was mentioned, because they all have hookups and they're all going to want to dump, and so now you're going to have more septic. But, another thing that I'm worried about for me personally and for the surrounding residents is it's inevitable that you're going to have runoff, fuel runoff from diesel, from regular runoff, and it's going to go into the ground, and we are all on a well system out there. There's no piped-in water, so that has the potential economically, environmentally, to contaminate the church's water since there, and you can see on there, I, I've listed at least nine homes within one thousand feet of the proposed land. There are other states at this point in time that have made a regulation that no truck stop will be placed in a, an area that is within two thousand feet of a residential area because of the possibility of contaminating well water and the pollution it brings and noise levels. And also approaching that, something that they mentioned is the entrance off of Bouchure Drive. I'm very interested to see how that happens because my property owns a major portion right along there. But if you go north of my property, where they own a piece of property, there is a huge retaining wall. It is a solid cement retaining wall, at least, I don't know, ten feet to fifteen feet. There's a big difference in elevation between Bouchure Drive and the land in question. So, I mean, there's multiple things, you know, on a personal level that I could also say I don't reason, but, you know, we've heard many of those, but the traffic and so forth, so.
So, you know, on this, there's, it's, there's a note here that says block berries. So what is your, can you just point out your property?
On there? Would you like me to come forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so if this is north, okay, so where's your property? Yeah. Right. All of that. All the way over, okay. Okay, gotcha.
Farms, chicken houses.
Alright, okay. Alright, okay, 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 thanks.
Any other question? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And anybody else? State your name and address, please.
My name is Ron Gallegos, and I live at eighty-eight fifty South Pine Street in Guthrie, Oklahoma. But I am also here on behalf of the Waterloo Road Church of Christ. Our property is immediately to the west of the property and borders on the property. And I don't want to take any more time. I know you've heard a lot, and so I don't want to be repetitive, but we do have security and safety concerns. We have activities not only, you know, on Sundays, but during the, the weekdays and weeknights and weekends. We have, in addition to adults, we obviously have small children and teenagers and that sort of thing. Everything has been mentioned as far as noise pollution, light pollution, and the traffic. And a lot has been said about the development that's across the street to the north. But that development runs all the way from I thirty five all the way to Sooner, and it's just huge. And there was already traffic backing up when we come to services already before that development, and it's going to get worse and worse. And I think what has been described about semi trucks being on Waterloo Road is going to create, I do believe is going to create a nightmare. That's all I wanted to say.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Ma'am? Again, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Diane Crepo. I live on sixty-two twelve North Sooner Road, so I live just south of Michael. I have several concerns. One concern, major concern is water, well water. Because everything's going to run down towards our property. So if they don't have a way, they're talking about spraying and all of that, and it all goes in the ground. You're looking at a major health concern with all of these wells, okay? I have another concern with safety. You have Epic Charter School, you have a children's athletic academy there, and I'm a special ed teacher, okay? I also worked with kids that were abused and abducted. I have a real long background with that. There's very little you can do when you put in a project like this to, to really ensure safety. And my big concern right now is the safety for the kids in those, that school, Epic Charter School, and for that child academy, and the safety of the people that, the rural area where people are living with kids and the church that's there now. We know populations, when you get truck stops in, I mean, I thirty five is well documented as a drug highway, north and south, because it connects to, to two other major highways that go east and west, okay? So you put a small, you put a trucks area in there, that's nice and hidden away. That's a real safety concern. Because it's going to bring in a lot of different people from a lot of different places that are moving back and forth, and you've got human traffic and you've got drug trafficking, and that's an issue, and I'm real concerned with the safety. I'm concerned with the safety for myself, in my property, in my home, when I'm gone working. Also, when you think about idling, I know that they're going to have the signs for no idling, but you can't police that. The county is, we have county sheriffs that, you know, come in, and if we have a problem, you call them, it could take them ten minutes to show up. Okay, it's because they're far away, the substations are not close. And so the no idling signs are going to be nice, but there's going to be no enforcement on that idling. It's, they don't have the manpower to enforce that with everything else that they have to do, the sheriffs have to do in that county. And the, the noise level is going to go from fifty decibels to eighty-five. And that fence, okay, and that bordering isn't going to do anything with that. And now you've got the horses, you've got a lot of horses, you've got a lot of domestic animals. But then with the idling, you also have the benzene and everything else that goes up into the air. Now, not only are the animals going to be negatively affected by that, but so are the people, because all that's airborne, you know, we just got through with COVID. We know how airborne stuff goes, you know, and, and it moves quickly. So I just, I'm really concerned that this project wasn't well thought out. It didn't take into consideration all of the, the residential area that's there and all of the traffic. I know if I get off the highway on Waterloo Road during rush hour, which I try not to do, okay? I get off that exchange, and it takes me minimum eight minutes. I timed it the other day during rush hour. I get off the highway, stop at the light, I, I go, which way is this? I go west. I'm, I'm not eastern, I go left and right where I come from, so I'm very sorry that I'm directionally challenged. But it takes me eight minutes to get to the four-way stop of Waterloo and Sooner Road. I watched people that were at the Wendy's trying to get out because they went in and got food. They were still sitting there when I passed them, and I was watching them for a long time. They just couldn't get out because of the traffic. It's, it's, it can't, that road cannot handle the traffic. When they were going to put the highway project in and they keep pushing it, they, my last that I read, and I may be not, you know, up to date, they were going to try to make that four lanes all the way down, and they decided they couldn't. They were going to stop the four lane at Sooner, Sooner Road and Waterloo Road. So Waterloo is always going to be a two-lane. Because they, and then if you look at that, that, all that commercial that is now coming in, there's nowhere to move two lanes, add two more lanes there. It's physically not possible, there's not the square footage to do that. So I think there's just a lot, there are a lot of really important points to take into mind before you think about putting a project of this caliber in this area. It's, it's so small, so. And I had one other question for you. Is there a way that we can get a copy of the minutes for this meeting? Is anybody taking minutes? It's, I know it's recorded.
The minutes, but the minutes do not become available till after the next meeting because we have to approve them, as you heard in the beginning of this meeting.
Right.
We approved the minutes from the meeting before, so once they're approved, then you can contact the county, and they'll be more than happy.
Great, great. And we can get a copy of the minutes of the meeting before right now, correct? Was there a meeting before, you're saying?
No, our meeting in May.
Yeah.
We approved the minutes tonight.
Oh, okay, okay. I apologize. I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Okay, alright. Well, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody who would like to add that we have not heard yet that would add something we haven't heard before?
My name is Sean McDougall. I'm a forty-two oh five Hickory Creek Lane. I'm in the Bluffs of Pine Creek, which is the neighborhood. A lot of the points I, I point to and recommend that you read what I wrote and sent out to Eric, to the commissioner, addressed to the commissioners. My background's logistics. When I moved back here in two thousand and three, lived over near Coffee Creek, which is further west, about ten minutes west of this. I could see at that time that there was a problem with Waterloo Road. The reason for that, you know, logistics guy and understanding movement and stuff. Waterloo Road is, is right on the county border, obviously. But some key factors here are that north of Waterloo Road, until you get to Highway thirty-three, basically the north Guthrie exit, there is no road that goes between High, Highway seventy-four on the west side of Oklahoma City and I thirty-five. So Waterloo Road actually serves all of the southern part of Logan County. And there's neighborhoods going up big time there, as has been pointed out. That should have been fixed a long time ago. This should have been measured in decades. That should have gotten fixed. It's a two-lane road. The other thing is, when this construction, if it happens, I think we, we heard the case at all called dueling banjos. I've heard again, a lot of discussion over the past few years that Oklahoma County and Logan County can't seem to get together to figure this out as far as what to do with, with Waterloo Road. The problem is, it's a bigger problem for Oklahoma County, because all of southern Logan County makes their way down Oklahoma County roads and through Edmund, eight neighborhoods all across between seventy-four and here. So basically, we've got all of southern county, Logan County coming, and anybody that's towards the east is going to be coming through this, this area in the center section. So I think it's important to understand that from the big picture. The other part is going south from there. You have to go three miles to get another exit off I thirty-five. So basically, Covell Road and Waterloo Road are the only two exits that serve a lot of the major roads in northern Oklahoma County. And there's tons of development, as you know, going, going on both on the east and west side of I thirty-five. So this is, this is more than an accident waiting to happen. It's going to be, again, you read it, read it in my, my letter, but I think it's important to really emphasize that. When this construction for this interchange happens, literally, I'm counting on the fact that Pam and I are going to have to, if we want to go to Stillwater, let's say, or go north on I thirty-five, we're going to have to go up to Sooner Road. It has, it's paved, Sooner's only paved from I thirty-five to Sooner. And we'll have to get on I thirty-five, which is five miles north to get, to get on I thirty-five going north. Likewise, when we come back, we'll have to do, everybody in this area will be doing the same thing. Or if we're going south, we'll have to go to Covell, which is what a lot of people already do, to avoid the stuff that's going on at Waterloo. And we've seen the thing with Wendy's. On Sunday, we came home from church and all of Waterloo was backed up from Wendy's, yeah, from. On Sunday, we came home from church and all of Waterloo was backed up from Wendy's, of course, they've got Taco Bell hadn't opened, the car wash is open, but you got Brahms coming, you got all those other developments already been set. The other part that I didn't care for today, that I heard, was what I'll call hide the weenie. The applicant did not mention ownership of that property, or the fact that it would have to be rezoned as well to take care of this. It should've been included, and that kinda pisses me off. I'm not gonna get into the ills of, I'm sorry. I'm not gonna get into the ills that, I think other people have covered it, but concerns for children, concerns for the things that everybody knows that happens, unfortunately, it's, it's an unfortunate thing, but most of these facilities are located in areas that are, and I think this is just a case where the property is, you know, was purchased for a bargain, or at least relative to what would be a prudent location, as was pointed out by Michael. This should be built on an intersection on a major highway and away from, from this kind of congestion. But I, I wanna reemphasize the fact that I think it's important for this, for the commission to hear this, because you're gonna be hearing a lot of things in the future about this,
Mr. DeFuria?
Hi.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Talbot?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
So the item is not approved. Just to clarify, this item will come up on the Board of County Commissioner meeting, which is next week?
No.
No.
It'll be next week. It'll...
It'll be in two weeks. They have the final say on this issue, so I would recommend that you plan on coming back and maybe talking then too. So, thank you for your time. Item number ten, discussion and possible action to approve the Oklahoma County Stormwater Management Plan. Eric?
Yes, this is really not meant for you guys to approve or deny the document, it's really just to have a public comment. I gave everybody the... To folks that are on our email list. So it's really if anybody had any comment before it goes to the Board of County Commissioners for their approval. Essentially, what the plan is, is our stormwater plan, we have to keep that up to date with DEQ's OKRO4 permit, and so they recently approved that two years ago. And so from that new permit approval date, which was June, two years ago, twenty-one, we have to update our stormwater plan to match that permit as far as the activities that we do each year to meet their requirements. And so that's what the plan's about. Didn't know if anybody had any comment, any concerns or anything we may need to focus on this permit that we're currently in, the current cycle comes, come due in twenty-twenty-six. So we always have room for improvement.
Anybody have any questions on what they saw?
So you're gonna make a new plan every three years?
Every five years, give or take.
Who, who tells you that?
State, Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality.
Okay.
Their stormwater division. Man, they, they answer the EPA, so it's a trickle-down effect, federal, state does.
So based on what you said, we don't have to have a motion to approve?
Right, it was really just for any, if anybody had any public comment, if any of the planning commissioners had any concerns with the document.
Is there anybody here who has a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move to item number eleven, discussion and possible action to receive the May twenty-twenty-three and June twenty-twenty-three fee fund and expense report. So how rich are we, Eric?
I wouldn't go that far. I mean, it's, it's going up, and as you'll notice, in next month, it'll go up just because we're in that time of year of contractor renewal, but as you can see there, I mean, we're up overall, but I wouldn't say significantly.
Do I have a motion to receive the fee fund report?
Question received. May and June.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Eric.
Mr. DeFuria?
Hi.
Ms. Patterson? Mr. Talbot?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Fee, fee, fee fund report received. So new business, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, Section three-one-one dot nine, new business is defined as any matter not known about or which could not have reasonably foreseen prior to the time of the posting of the meeting. Any?
No, sir.
Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. DeFuria?
Hi.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
We adjourn.
I messed up.
I gotta do everything, just, just right.
You do not want to have...
So we'll have to put it on the agenda for maybe two weeks, but it'll be on the web. It's on the county website. It'll be on, all the agendas on oaklandcounty.org.
Is it just whenever they want to?
No, we just have, he has to write up regulations, that's up to the DA, and we get it back.
It's the whole process.
Right, it's not like we just go here, put this on the agenda.
You got that.
I wish it did.
What, what do you do?
I'm, I was his first deputy, so I kinda do all the regulations and stuff, whatever you do.
Which district is that?
District three, so Edmund Arty, D.O., Luther.
So where do you guys get the first order?
What?
Where do you get the first order?
Come on, man, it's all...
Man, I know, we're trying. I'm trying at least.
There's meetings coming soon. Discuss the fees from Sooner to Air Depot. State, their I-35 design, they went ahead and designed it. They wanted us to build. And that felt pretty severe.